This is not the draft we're looking at. This is the previous draft.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I got three of them, but this is the 24th one.
Correct, and it is not in all the 24.
Right, and they took that out, so I'm glad you showed that to me. In one of the prior, and that's why the red line is so important, because this was something that we had put in the red line to you guys requesting, to the village requesting, and was taken out of this document. We hadn't realized that it had been taken out, which the red line would have clearly showed us and wouldn't be able to talk about. That's why the red line version, the marked up version continues to be the bible of the document that we should be using. But this goes back to, we had requested that the town have at least one seat on the fire commission, or whatever the official name of the commission is, in order for the town to be represented, including all key decisions. We talked about it early in the discussions, haven't really circled back to it. That remains an important aspect, especially if our costs are going way up, to at least understand and know what the village, fire EMS commission, police commission, whatever the name of it is, is looking at it from a future capital standpoint. Now whether that's, whether legally, we can have a seat, has to, should be determined. But even if it's not a voting seat, having just a seat on the commission as advisory, one or the other is very important to us going forward. We're gonna sign up to, for some of these costs that are going up, et cetera, et cetera. So, we still want that on, to be discussed.
I can ask Stan, and he can give you a legal reason for us to say no. Because, I mean, Penny explained a good deal of that, and she's not a lawyer. I mean, you're not citizens of the village, so therefore you can't be on the police and fire commission, because they only hire fire and discipline. They don't do capital.
And I guess, and I understand that. I'm not arguing with the legal aspect. You don't, probably don't legally have to, but we're very, very much committed to making, wherever possible, this one community. And working together should be a goal of both boards. And to me, courtesy position on it, even if it's not voting, to understand and to bear part of it is a good step towards the communities working together, not keeping one at hands, at arms length, and not sharing anything. Because I do believe we need to, the two communities do need to work closer together and trust each other a little bit, and improve things moving forward. And that may be a soapbox that I have, but hearing things that legally we don't have to do illegally, that just keeps, to me, a separation.
I have no problem with communication, but if it's against the law, it's against the law.
We don't know that it's against the law. I have an advisory seat.
I understand.
And we'll talk to our attorney as well, and ask them.
If it's against the law, I don't feel like going to pour over like, oh, you're doing this.
Tim, let me, let me, let me restate. If it is absolutely illegal to have a partner in the fire and EMS area, on the police and fire commission, or even as an advisory position, then absolutely, we're not gonna break the law.
I mean, if it's, they're having a meeting, it's open to the public, you're welcome to come. But if it's full session, you can't be there, because you're not on the board.
Well, that may be the case if it's an advisory position anyway. We'll check.
I'm just saying, it's like, I just, I don't wanna open means violation, I don't wanna break.
None of us want that either. We are all in the state age on that.
I mean, I hate paying lawyers.
So, there's, there's really two, and I don't know how you guys, statutorily, I know where the police and fire commission stands. From an operational standpoint, I also know that you have a public safety committee. That public safety committee is an ordinance, actually, it's not a state statute. So whether or not it's, from an operational stand, I don't, I don't know how much of what type of what goes to either one or both of them, but the fact that you have both, a PFC and a public safety committee, to me is either redundant, or they're serving two specifically different purposes.
The fire is higher fire discipline, and the other is deals with budget and.
Okay, so potentially, instead of the PFC seat, because some PFCs also do the administration of the finance and budget.
Yeah, and that depends on what type of municipality it's.
Correct.
The villages probably don't have that, but cities, depending on what class they are, have that.
Correct. So if the public safety committee is a possibility, rather than higher fire and discipline, I 100% understand. It's within the community, it's a resident-appointed thing. And there's likely no choice other than attending public meetings. But if the public safety committee does some of the long-term planning, and the budgetary, capital requests, and those types of things, that's at least some amount of involvement that the town could partake with. Aside from, again, regarding public meetings, just because you show up at a public meeting, doesn't mean that you get the opportunity to say anything. Because numerous agendas don't have public comment on them for you guys. So, and if you hold Roberts to a T square, you sit there and be quiet and listen to what's going on to open government. You don't get an opportunity to formally participate. So, that, the point is, is rules and letters of the law, and the availability for us to actually actively participate.
I can ask Stan, but like I said, it's an open meeting. Anybody can show up. If it's opposed, yeah, gotta go. But I mean, I can ask, but I think as far as, because you're a town resident, I don't think that, you know, I'm not a lawyer, I don't think that you could have a position on any of our committees.
We'll all check and see where we come down.
No?
That's fine.
The only other thing I made notes on is the last page, there's an exhibit, there's two exhibits. First one sells, it's by a notorious list of the vehicles, which is fine. Exhibit B, and we'll talk about it here, but I'm curious. Prior contract has the formula called out, just on page one, on page 200 fees. You've got an exhibit B that kind of breaks down the call volume, and it's, has mutual aid on here. Nothing's filled in, so. What's the purpose of exhibit B?
So that you can see how the percentages are calculated out.
Well, we get that in the monthly updates we get.
No, when we actually figure out the budget, when we actually figure out the budget for the next year.
Let me rephrase the question.
Then you can say, here's equalized value for the town, here's equalized value for the village, total calls for the year, and then it's broken down for the things.
Has mutual aid been part of that call volume formula? Because it's usually, it's usually been town, fire, EMS, right?
It says mutually received, or must have mutually received.
Mutual aid received, and, so received means it's coming into us, whether it's the village or the town.
Know what mutual aid is, absolutely.
Yep, and then provided, like, we went to Mosquito, Irma Guanego yesterday. That's providing it to someone else. I don't know exactly what you're asking.
Well, and my note is, we're gonna discuss it at our meeting, the town will come back. I just wanted to bring it up, that a little bit confused as to why mutual aid specifically is called out separately here, and it hasn't been in the prior. So, we'll talk about it, we'll look at the monthly things and see how it adds up.
When you looked at that other sheet, when we had the breakdown of the three different kinds, and you, Josh, you called out the percentages.
Yep.
Well, another one of the things that this mutual aid thing, Stan and I were talking about, well, we wanna make sure that everything comes out to 100%. We take mutual aid out, then it's like, the percentage for calls gets kinda skewed.
Right, but those calls for service aren't in either one of those communities.
But if we're using the general concept, as far as if we're doing mutual aid calls to another community, we as a community are supporting and helping out another community. So therefore, we should all be paying to help those people out, and hope that they.
So this isn't an add over the prior contract, a change over the prior contract. Because in the past, I believe it was just the calls within the town, within the village.
Yeah, I don't know how that figured out in the last thing, just.
We'll review it, we'll look at the numbers. We'll look at the numbers over the last couple of years and see.
Someone's gotta pay for mutual aid calls that are going out. And, you know, we wanna be all, wanna be community, and we should all.
Right, but I mean, the counter to that is, the concept is, is that if you don't, if you don't have the staff, if you're not funding the staff to have someone there 24/7, 365, you're not responding to mutual aid at all.
If you don't have mutual aid going out, then you don't have to worry about it.
Right.
And if you only have two mutual aids for the entire year, well, that's one for you, one for us.
Correct. I understand that, but to include the, I don't know, let's get. At the last meeting, I remember Mike saying, we would go to those calls regardless, of if the town was here or if they weren't, because it's mutual aid. So, to look at the mutual aid calls and the discretionary staffing, if you wanna call it that, of the fire chief, and then say, well, because we ran these 14 additional calls, the town has to help pay for those, even though it was not in our service district. That, that's where, that's part of the reason why I brought it up in the calculation, number one, is because the breakdown didn't exactly match. Because if that's the case, then we need to split those mutual aid calls, not use it as a third number.
Well, it's 50/50 split.
That, right, but it wasn't in these calculations. It was not included in the calculation. So if you run 20, 10 are ours and 10 are yours. Or, do we then use that as, like, this is where the hard part comes in. If the other parts of the calculations say that we're, I'm just using numbers. We're gonna pay 45%, you're gonna pay 55%, okay? Do the mutual aid calls get broken out on that same amount, or is it flat out 50/50?
The mutual aid calls should be 50/50. If you have only 50 calls for the entire year for the town, and we have 150 in the village, well, I mean, it's part of regular calls. And we have 30 over the person, but you're going to some other, some other community. I mean, if we're all paying in, yeah, you know, but mutual aid, that's, like you said, that's.
Then that should be.
That's, that's a general thought.
Okay, I'm just saying, when, if, if the village board takes up using population as a third piece of this calculation, and we're using mutual aid calls, those mutual aid calls have to, have to be assigned somehow within the total call volume. Because they were actually excluded, they were as part of the total, but they weren't assigned to anyone. And that is not numerically representative of how the whole would then be calculated. And that was the issue with this, is that you didn't get to 100% with the way that it was figured out.
And you'd like to have it, get 100% set up, the way there's no debate as far as how, where the numbers are coming from.
And whatever verbiage, if, again, the village takes up using population as the third cog to the wheel, the portion about mutual aid absolutely has to say, mutual, the numerical total of mutual aid calls will be split 50/50. Like, that has to be in there, not just part of an Excel spreadsheet formula.
Well, that's why you have the, that's written on here as far as.
But it's not, it's not in the, like, it's in exhibit, but it's not.
Yeah, see, you look at exhibit A, which would be that, so that's how that's figured out. It's just kinda like a, instead of trying to work that all into this paragraph, that's why it's over here as a worksheet.
Then it should be pulled out of the, the calculation itself, then needs to not be at all in the agreement, and it needs to be referred to as exhibit A. So that it's either one spot or the other, not both. Because the, the amount, now I gotta find the email again, because I thought we were closing and not being down here. The calculation that was in the agreement that started this conversation at the beginning of the meeting, said call volume and equalized value is within the text of the agreement.
Yes.
But then secondarily to that, call volume is in a different location. So it either needs to say, and refer to exhibit A within that, or put that entire calculation in exhibit A and say, refer to exhibit A. Because if you look at it, you say, call volume and equalized value, in exhibit A, at some point in time, either disappears, gets changed, whatever, and it's not part of this overall thing. It's going to lead to confusion at some point in time.
Now, do you have a problem with how we are doing the, proposing the call calls as far as, you have a full 12-year actual numbers?
I'm gonna say this, yes, I do. And the reason why I say yes, I do, is that if we are staffing to respond to mutual aid calls, and I get that sometimes we will, and sometimes we won't, and I know that mutual aid calls don't make up the majority of what this department responds to on a monthly basis. But if we're staffing three people, I wanna make damn sure that the requested mutual aid is at least, or more than, what's being provided. The at least part is the important part. And quite frankly, I can't tell you from looking off the top of my head, how many we get versus how many we give.
That's not, that was my question. My question was as far as doing the full 12 months of actual report, maybe using actual reports, starting, since the whole idea is to provide everything, basically October 1st. We wanna use October, December, in this case, 2024, and then January through September of 2025 for actual numbers.
I, I think.
Do you have any issue with that?
I, I think the actual, here's my part, we'll leave him to talk about it in a second. If we're going to include mutual aid calls, this is my fundamental philosophy on this. If we're going to utilize mutual aid calls out, right? Because you're not counting mutual aid calls in as part of this. You're, we're doing calls responded to, which would be the out part. Because theoretically, you're already out at one you're requesting for. But if we're providing service outside the district, and I'm not saying you are, so don't take it this way, if we staffed 18 people in that station, full-time, 365, you'd be able to provide a hell of a lot of mutual aid. There'd also be a really big cost of operation of that. So far, my concern, without seeing a budget, without seeing a staffing plan, all that kinda thing, is that if we're including mutual aid calls out, that's a cost associated with staffing, right? I, I get that we're responding to it. At the same point, those folks are already in the station, willing to respond to either the town or the village for a call as well. So that cost is almost.
You don't want us to be taken advantage of as far as mutual aid, as far as, like.
Correct. Increasing, increasing the staffing cost to a point where we never call for mutual aid, but we give it all the time.
Yeah, that's.
And, and I, again, we got no control other than the fiscal part of this. And the fiscal part of this says, is there is absolutely a cost for only requesting one additional unit to come in. I know it doesn't work that way. But, from the standpoint of, what is our resources compared to a La Grange, or a Kettle Moraine? I'm not even gonna say Western Lakes, because we're not, probably not responding up there a whole hell of a lot. But, it is what it is, that the resources are the resources. And I get there's specific different things too, where if someone's calling for rural help, they're asking for a tank truck. City of Whitewater needs a tank truck to respond to a call. They might not need an ambulance, because they're cool with that part, you know? Excuse me, all of those things go into the entire wall of this. So, to me, counting mutual aid, I get you would have to amend an actual call report. But that actual call report should easily say, mutual aid responded out to, pick a different district, department, what have you. To me, I get that that staffing cost is there, but if we don't have the staff to respond to it, it's not a cost. So we're paying for the staff to be there, and then we're using that as part of the calculation of how are we paying for it to be there. That's where I have a mental rum between how that actually plays out in reality.
Well, if we don't have the staff to respond.
I don't know if this helps at all or not, Josh, but when we, in order for us to send a piece of apparatus on a mutual aid, we have to have the people to backstaff that. So we send out what we have, as I am responding, say, we have a Mavis request, blah, blah, blah. We have the people to come in. If we don't have the people to come in and backstaff, we generally don't send a piece of apparatus.
Let's go to a question I have.
Where our priority is to the village and the town residents for primary, the EMS service that we provide. So, there is a cost, I guess, if you're looking at it that way, to have those people in the station at all times, whether they're coming in while that piece apparatus is going out, but it's still, we're still staffing that model that we have, by making sure that those people are coming in. So, if that makes any sense to you, I guess.
It, it 100% doesn't, and quite frankly, it justifies exactly what my concern is, is that we're staffing then, I'm gonna say, additional staff, right? If you need three, and the three go somewhere else, we need three more, so now we're paying for six.
Right.
Right? Like, and as if.
For however long it takes them to get back in there.
30 minutes, three hours, three days, three weeks, like. So then to use that as part of how do we develop budget, and how do we allocate the portions of that, we're, I don't wanna say theoretically increasing our costs. Because I 100% understand that mutual aid is what it is. If you have the staff there, then you can respond, you can respond. That's part of the only way rural fire EMS is even operating these days to begin with. But, that's my problem with including mutual aid calls as part of the cost allocation part of the calculation, that currently doesn't include population that hopefully.
Does, does the village, when there's mutual aid, and we send our equipment and personnel out to another community with mutual aid, is there any funds that come back to us?
The only time we would receive funds if it was a motor vehicle accident. That's the only way we can collect any payments. We don't charge a fee for, currently, we don't charge a fee for.
That'd just be a lot of invoices going back and forth, and people come out to us, and so on, just.
Otherwise, for like, example, let's just say, someone called out for mutual aid, right? We went out there five times, and they never came for mutual aid for us. They called for mutual aid, probably won't go back out there, because they're not coming to help us out.
Makes sense.
I mean, granted, it would get to a point where if they don't respond to our calls, we can cut them off.
And we really don't have that issue, but.
So, I think you've already.
I'm just throwing it out there as an example.
I think you've already answered my question, but, so if we send somebody on a mutual aid, how is Palmyra protected? And I think you said, because before you send mutual aid out, you make sure you have people that are part-time, whatever, come in and backfill. What about equipment?
Generally speaking, the vehicle that goes out of Porter's Moses Art Tender. Because rural, like you said, is the most common thing out here, people rely on water. So that takes two people to get that on the road. We still have an engine in Porter's that has a thousand gallons of water on it. So we can still respond to a call. Would we, in, you know, technically, we'd have to call mutual aid for water if ours wasn't on the way back.
So if the tender's out, and I think, whether it's in one of our meetings, or just in side conversations at the firehouse, whenever we've talked, I think you said that the tender is generally used when they go out to the lake? Or in, maybe it was the whole town, you generally use the tender, because you have, when you have fire hydrants.
When we respond, I'll just give you our response model for the town. We go to the town, our engine is the first one out the door, for any fire that we have, village or town.
All right.
Because we have staffed that with three people. And then the people that come to the station would grab the tender, bring us more water. Anytime we're going to the town, we're calling mutual aid immediately anyway, because we have a very limited water source in the town, so we need as much coming as we can get.
Right.
You know, but if, if we send that to a mutual aid call, do we have another tender in reserve? Nope, we don't. But we still have an engine that's gonna go out the door with the people that we backstaff.
But you could recall yours.
We certainly could, yeah.
Okay. I have two quick things before we, other than that, I'm, I'm done. Are you, do you have more? Do you guys have anything else?
My only request is you ram along that little bit thing of population. I'd like to have whatever.
Send a T in an email.
Send it to me an email, send it to Lori or whatever, so that I get the correct wording.
Yep.
Does that sound better to my board?
Michelle, just so you guys are aware, is not in the office the next, well, technically wanted, but, so if you, if Lori's trying to send anything to just our clerk, it would be advantageous to include town board members, because she's not gonna be immediately moved for business, kinda thing, but.
I do.
Two things, quick. I'm looking at a contract for another Lake District, and I won't go into which district it is. But, this goes back to the fire, police and fire commission, or public safety. They have a fire board, and the duties of the fire board, and I'm just gonna read the contract. The fire board will be responsible for overseeing the, overseeing the operation of the fire department. The fire board's oversight shall include, but shall not be limited to monitoring the overall performance of the fire department with respect to its goals, budgetary matters, and reporting obligations to the municipalities. The fire board's oversight, oversight shall also include the monitoring of the performance of the fire chief, including her training, staffing, blah, blah, adopted policies, and administration of the annual budget. And I won't read the rest of that paragraph, but the next paragraph is composition. The fire board shall be comprised of 14 members. The mayor, village president, and town chairman from each of the municipal municipalities shall appoint two members. The members appointed must be residents of the municipality from which they are appointed, and can be trustees, aldermen, supervisors of the municipality. Fire board members shall not include mayors, village presidents, or town chairperson. Appointed members will be placed on the fire board once approved by their municipality's governing body. And there's a whole other clauses here on that. But, from a legal standpoint, and maybe you'll, you might say, well, you know, your attorney may come back and say, well, fire board's different than the fire and police commi, police and fire commission, different to public safety. But, if that's the case, we may come back and say, we want a fire board specifically, where we're represented on that. So, at least from a legal standpoint.
Is it a Lake District or a fire district?
This is a, this is a fire district contract with their municipalities that they cover.
Yeah, we've had something like that back in the day, back when it was a town and village where a fire district, and then we had a board. But we've gone.
These are, these are customers, much like we are. Their municipalities are customers to them, to this fire district. So, there is a way to structure to where we would have at least input into this. And I didn't, I didn't read that to start that whole discussion again, just to bring up that, it appears that there is a way to make it happen, so we'll talk to our group, our attorney. You guys can do the same, and we'll talk about it again next week, or the one after that.
Well, that's how our fire district ran years ago, where they created the budget, and then they told the town and village, this is what you're gonna pay in. So, and we were customers of the fire district. We had probably a 20-page contract back in the day.
That's fine.
But, I'm just saying that what you're doing, what you're saying there, if it's, yes, that's how it ran way back in the day, but.
This isn't, this isn't that contract back then, this is.
No, I'm just saying, but that's how, just a little bit that you, the general gist that you just read, that reminds me of how it used to run back in the day when we had a fire district.
I'm saying there's a, potentially is a way.
If we were to create a fire district.
Overview it, see how it plays in. My only other comment before we end is, and please don't take, I am not preaching to anybody, but you made a, a comment was made earlier about how the attorney says, we're not gonna do it that way. Whether it be in private business or as a board, we make the decisions. I'm assuming your board operates the same way. And then we talk to our attorney. Attorney will tell us if anything's illegal, but it's really, here's how we wanna operate. What's the legal language for that? So, we make, unless it's illegal, we make the decisions, then the lawyer fits the language around that. So, if it, you know, so there were some comments made, going back to the form. So if it, you know, so there were some comments made, going back to the formula, so hopefully that's the same way with the village and your attorney as well.
Yeah, but if we don't go along with what the attorney says, we can get ourselves in a lot of trouble as well. We've gotten birdwires, like, oh, yeah, Palms, 60, oh, yeah, Stan, doesn't do that, we decide to do something different.
There is nothing illegal about adding population to the formula. So there's no legal difficulties there, but just because your attorney said, no, don't do it, doesn't.
And he has an opinion, and he says.
That's an opinion, I guess. Anyway.
He's been in there for 40 years, I think he knows what he's talking about. But if you need to have a paragraph explaining why he's saying no, I can ask him to, or setting up, and I can say this is the reason why.
There's nothing illegal about having population in there, especially in fair.
I'm just saying.
I need a motion. Very good. Motion to adjourn the town, special town board meeting, August 14.
Seconded. Motion's made, seconded, any more discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Thank you. Look forward to meeting next, we'll be at the town hall next Thursday.